I got a call with this meeting in order, thank all of y'all for being here in line. Certainly appreciate it. It's always good to see the community getting together. First we have our indication, I'll ask Commissioner Lydwell to do so.
Please pray with me. Almighty heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening to engage in the democratic process and to carry on the affairs of this local government, I just pray that you would endowed each of us with wisdom as we make decisions. Pray, Lord, for this county, for residents of this county, and it counted a great privilege, a blessing, that we can live in a county such as here, where we see the beauty of your creation all around us. So Father, we ask your blessings upon us tonight, we thank you, Lord, for our county employees, the service that they give to our people here in this county, we thank you, Lord, for our public safety personnel and what they bring to us, we thank you, Lord, for all your blessings to us, and ask all these things in your presence.
Amen. Now, Mr. Taylor, will you lead us into the place of the Lord's listening? We would all be thrived with the praise of the Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item of business is approval of the minutes from the March seventeenth meeting, we have a motion.
We approve.
We've got a motion for approval and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signal by raising your hand. Motion taken. Here's citizens, anyone else who signed up for?
Mr. Theis, but he's signed up to speak about in ten.
All right, Mr. David and Ms. Mary Ellen Taylor, who signed up to speak about Washington Road paving. Taylor's here. Let these go forward, take your name and address, and then...
Mary Ellen Taylor, and it's nine sixty Washington Road, Hamilton, Georgia.
David Taylor.
Nine sixty Washington Road, Hamilton, Georgia.
Actually, yes.
We're nine sixty four.
Oh, we're not.
Ah, okay. All right.
I think we, you're close enough with the band.
On the same property. We're here to just remind you that we're here. We moved here in nineteen ninety-six on Washington Road. We lost our home to a fire at that address. Again, we still don't have a fire hydrant on our part of Washington Road. But the reason we're here tonight is because when we bought our property and home in nineteen ninety-six, we were promised that we were, it was going to be paved in nineteen ninety-nine. And it's two thousand and fifteen. So we came back with neighbors last September and addressed you all. And we were told that we were on the list and that the lawyer had get some work done, some permission from some of the property owners, and that we would, it would start in the spring. So I sent another email, that was in February, just sort of kind of reminding that we'd already seen surveys done three times on our roads since we have lived there. So that money was wasted, because nothing ever happened. And we would even speak to the people when they were doing the surveys, "Yeah, you're on the list, it'll be, it'll be in a few months," nothing ever happened. So nineteen years now. We're just here to remind you, it is the spring. And so when I called to, when I emailed the last email, and I wanted to address you all, we were told, my husband took the call, that they still had to go out and get permission from property owners. Well, that kind of baffles me, because we-
Why wasn't that done in December?
We were assuming that would be done after we addressed you all in September, we were told that they couldn't start paving in the fall because of the rainy season.
Cold weather.
So we figured, okay, so that's when they're gonna get all the paperwork done. Well, here it is, April. And my husband went door to door to as many neighbors as he could and got people to sign the paperwork. Now, some of the people are property owners and we don't know them, they don't live here. But the point is that, you know, when we're promised something, year after year, nineteen years is a very long time, when half of Washington Road is paved, our part is not, half of Mountain Road is paved, and the other part is not. And yet all of Morgan Copeland is paved. And so, and because it's not paved over the years, we're dumping ground. So lots of people decide that because it's not a paved road, they're gonna dump their trash. And we'd had TVs, tires, all kinds of trash, bricks, and I'm the lady that walks down the road, and I'm a walker, and I pick up all the trash all the time to keep my county beautiful, 'cause I'm like you, drives me nuts. But, you know, and over the years, the last few years, the county works would come out and they would, what do you call it, grade it? Yeah, and it was done well, and we would get gravelled. It's gotten worse over the years, they're grading out coming as soon as I call if they can, but they're not grading it as well, and they're also not putting it-
All right, here's the bottom line, are we anywhere near doing anything? I'm talking about working on the road, not just paperwork, because y'all did give me your word that you would start working on that in the spring. And we didn't think, meant sending out paperwork, we actually thought you had worked on it.
Mr. Taylor, there is a lot of, I mean, interrupt you, but there has been a lot of work going on. Before we can even begin to get right-of-way deeds, we have to do flat searches, title searches, deed searches, and that's what we've been doing. Our county attorney and his staff have been doing that, and we have now gotten to the point where you have, you picked up some, I know, and others have been made out, the actual right-of-way deeds, and as soon as those are signed, yes, then that is-
Why wouldn't have those been sent out in the winter? I mean, that just makes, it baffles me that you wait till April to send them out.
We haven't been, we've been working during that whole time, and it's not easy to do some of those-
And we have signed some of those years ago.
Yes, we did.
I mean, this isn't the first time we've gotten one. And I, you can see the frustration.
Greg, Greg, I will let you, well, just tell us where we are now.
Well, as soon as we have this done, then we can start engineering, but there's one thing we need to be clear on, and we can't sit up here and say that your road is gonna be paved for certain because of there are owners on that road that will not give up the land to allow us to pave this, pave it. They can throw wrench into this whole project, and you need to be aware of that.
There's also another part of that, two or three can't keep the whole road from being, what's it called? I'm not sure of the term that you use, that-
It's a prescription placement right now. We need to have sufficient right-of-way to pave. Now, if they ended up being at the end of the road, fine, they can live on a dirt road, but if they're in the middle of the project, you need to be aware that somebody can throw a monkey wrench in this, and we can't sit up here and promise you absolutely that it's gonna be done if somebody decides to mess up the project.
Well, y'all already had promised it would be started in spring. You did.
I understand, but if-
You gave me your word.
If somebody throws a monkey wrench into it, we can only pave as hard as our primary, and hopefully that would pay.
Well, here's the other thing, then, why weren't those other surveys already done? Over the years?
That was before my time, but we tried to, at the same survey companies, do them so all they didn't have to redo their work, it was already established, they could just use that as baseline.
That doesn't make sense. So we spent money that went nowhere, because you had to pay them.
Understood, but it would cost more to have the surveys done this time if they had not been done before, so it was totally wasted.
Bottom line, we're always, we're always, of course, do you think getting anything paid, that we get all those right-of-way surveys back?
If, if we get the right-of-way surveys back, then we can bid the road, and that is-
Well, we have to, we're gonna do some design.
Well, I understand that, but that's, but then, then we can bid the road, and that's the one that's supposed to go first.
So when do we hear something?
We are gonna do it, we have, we have prom, we have said that this would be our number one road, but it does assume that we get all those signatures, because you have to do that.
So what is the deadline for the signatures to be in?
Twenty-fourth.
Of this month?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you don't get them, then we're back to square one? What, what can we do, what more can we do?
I was gonna say that what I'd like to ask you to do-
Well, like I said, there are some people that have property on that road that don't live there.
That don't live on it.
They don't live it.
The guys haven't been on that property forever.
They just rent it out to hunters. So what do we do?
The ones that don't live there are not the ones I've heard from, I've heard from two who live there that are hesitant.
Probably because they signed the papers already before.
There might be.
They're not recording.
Talked to several people, they've signed them before and not gonna sign them again.
But I would say that's where you can help us.
So we'll have to find out from you all who those people are, so we can approach them.
I will tell you there.
Okay.
Email you those names, follow Monday.
Okay.
We've gotten over half of them ourselves, a couple of families, I mean, we're doing our part.
Good, thank you.
And we're asking you to really do your part and not put us on the back burner.
Well, I'll tell you, Mr. Taylor, that, that I did not realize how much work our county attorney has to do for these roads, and I know that he's, he has ten roads here, and we said that Washington Road would be first, but he has had to put in a tremendous amount of time, you know, he has to do, he has to have the plants, he has to look at the deeds, he has to do the time searches. And how many are there on your road?
Thirty.
So that takes a great deal of time. I myself did not realize that.
Ms. Lanson, I believe it takes a lot of time, but we've been waiting a long time too now.
I understand, and I understand.
And I appreciate what you're doing, but you gotta see where we're coming from too now a little bit.
I understand where you're coming from.
And when you jump on all of them, we need to-
Well, may I say also that there's no one person that can promise any one of us that any road could be paved. No one promised you, I don't know who it was, but they had absolutely no authority, because it's not always just up to the commission, and you've been assigned from the very beginning.
Well, it's not by the commission, because they said that in the spring we'll start in Washington.
I thought about in nineteen ninety-six.
Oh, well, I don't know.
Because you're saying twenty years, but starting in the spring, yes, it all goes well, and all goes right, but there's, that's not within our control, it's been diligently worked on.
Well, it has been, Mr. Chiligan, I know you're, you're meaning what you're saying, but it's been a long time, and we have been told by the commission, we're on the list, we're gonna get to it, we're gonna get to it, and we're getting nothing. But good luck service, but we're getting nothing.
But you have gotten something, the title work has been done, and the deed-
Well, I'm gonna be dead in my grave by the time it's paved. Another twenty years, you know? That'll be eighty-five.
This much work has gone into it, this, this is what it takes.
I understand, but we're just frustrated.
I understand that.
And we know a lot of work goes into it, but we've been here a long time waiting to, and we get the same stuff back in the end.
I'm sorry you could've promised this for so many years, and I hear other people say that too, but that's, it's, they're wrong to promise that-
Well, a lot of y'all are on paved roads, we're on dirt roads.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We are trying hard to get it done so we can get started as soon as, and we can, and it falls in the line very quickly, then it will be very short.
Well, I've got my hat show here.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Go visit your neighbors. I did, fifteen of them.
All right, next is the financial statement for January, which was table last meeting due to a description of three thousand dollars.
Now, that was, that was, this, this is the- The financial statement was tabled for a water charge on the AIC center. Let me introduce Mr. Glick here real quick.
Okay.
Paul Glick is now our new finance officer, and he has tried to find out what that charge was for today. I tried to get ahold of Jamie Webb to see if he knows what it's for, and he had texted me, and I texted him back, so I've got an answer, because I was in America's all day today, so I wasn't able to get an answer, and Jamie was on vacation all last week, so I couldn't get up and do that, so it's, we will get to the bottom of it and find out what the heck it was. I remember asking for it, and it was, I don't recall what the roundabout answer to was, so I wasn't particularly happy with it, I don't think it was timed.
We will leave it tabled, and as soon as they-
I may get the answer for you before then immediately.
All right.
And if I do, I will let you know.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, I'll jump ahead to the next item, against the budget minimum.
I've got the answer.
If you've gotten it, go ahead and explain that one.
That was put down as a membership, and a little misleading, it actually was the monitoring contract for ACOM courthouse for the year, and apparently it was not, if I didn't read it correctly, or read that, or whatever, and that is what that was for, it was a ballot contract.
All right.
Well, it's, it's, we know what it's for, and so, I don't know if the membership's appropriate place to put it or not.
So we need that correction.
All right, so we had a motion last time for approval within, in a second.
It was, I believe that was, that was passed with just that one exception.
With that one exception, all right, so we need one for this new one. So it is not a leadership fee, not a maintenance thing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, I'll be included.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signal by raising your hand. Motion taken. Okay, the next item is job description for the director, department services, development services, director, county engineer, now community development department. We've made a couple of changes to that last time, have those changes been made at everyone?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they're in red in the revised version we're giving. Then one other change was made in the new qualification.
Okay. What changes, name?
And you will give the revised version in qualifications, they have a survey or certificational survey being preferred under the law.
As opposed to being a mandatory qualification or a first qualification, we need more important.
There is one other thing I'd like to suggest, and that under supervises directs, and at the end of that, that sentence, it says, completes employee performance appraisals under the wire, and I'd like that changed to annual. We've had a little problem getting the annual one done.
It's really not, it comes from our office to have a new annual job description, and they're not being updated. That's, I guess it's why it's worth it, I think for both directors' positions, some of them just have it under wire, because it's when we get it to them.
Well, I'd still like it to put in there annual.
I would agree with that too, I think it's time we started, if you want the annual, we should have employees needed as well as we did.
We'll come up with a, we need an employee form as close to a supervisor form, which I've already developed, so we'll get that taken care of, and we'll-
Good.
Press on.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, just, just a point, making these changes in Ray, it makes it certainly a lot easier to go back and look at six, I don't know what the change is for, so Nancy Hurd was, came up with that, makes it much easier, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I hear no other comments, and other than that one other change, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion for approval of this job description as amended.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signal by raising your hand. Carrie, we're moving into new business, do you want to introduce Paul further, or?
I'll, I'll let you have an opportunity to introduce.
All right.
I think you know who he is.
We welcome Mr. Glick to Harris County, we look forward to working with you, we're highly recommended, and we feel very fortunate to have you here.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity, should be fun.
This, this Paul Glick is our new financial services director, two days on the job. Absolutely. He's got quite a resume behind him, but done a lot as far as his teaching and actually working with the state of Georgia, county issues, and directing a lot of things, and he's got lots of suggestions to make, and it is real hard work, so we look forward to moving this forward. Thank you, thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda is a resolution honoring James York. I see Mr. York is here, and James York has been with the county for a number of years, and he has been a delight to work with, and heads our roads, headed our roads department. Tell you what, when you ask James to do something, or to take a look at something, you better look at it if you, real quick, if you wanna see it how it is, because he is, Johnny on the spot, really gets out there and gets it done, has done a yeoman's job for this county, we're gonna miss him a great deal, and he's got some good folks coming behind him, that he's trained, but we are gonna miss James quite a bit, I asked him if I could draft him and come back if we ever got a high spot, but he's looking forward to retiring. And James, if you would like, if he would come up here, I'd like to read this resolution. We had a celebration for him the other day, and I asked him if you sure you wanted to do that, and he said, yeah, it's time, he was ready to do some stuff for himself, and we are gonna miss him great. Whereas James York became a part of the Harris County family in two thousand and two, and is now chosen to retire from the county, and whereas initially hired on March twentieth, two thousand and two, as heavy equipment operator, he was promoted to road supervisor on July one, two thousand and eight, and again promoted on February seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen, to public work, public works director, the position he held on his last day of employment, which was April second, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas as road supervisor and public works director, James worked with the prison warden in the utilization of inmate skills and labor for the construction, maintenance, and repair of streets and roads in the county and the cities, and whereas James worked effectively with the general public by responding to and addressing matters pertaining to road issues, and whereas James' wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and experience are gifts he shared with elected officials, employees, and the citizens of Harris County by consistently creating a pleasant and professional relationship with those he encountered. And whereas through his committed, commitment to the county, James served its citizens for many years, giving of his time and expertise, and thereby contributing many hours toward the betterment of the county. And whereas James has weathered the sometimes controversial and stormy waters of passage while providing leadership with his quiet demeanor. And whereas it is fitting that James York be recognized upon his retirement from county employment for a job well done, therefore being resolved that the Harris County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize and honor James York for his service, dedication, and commitment to the citizens of Harris County, and that this resolution of appreciation be presented to the dedicated faithful servant, and a copy be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners of Harris County, so resolved this seventh day of April, two thousand and five, and I make that in the form of a motion. Have a second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. James? We wish you well in your retirement, enjoy it, sir.
Yes, sir.
Please don't be a stranger to us.
I will. My wife misses some kind of list she had, I thought emailed it.
Would that be that funny new list?
All right, the next item on the agenda is proclamation, shall read, this is an annual request for proclamation to proclaim April as organ donor month in Harris County. Jackie Easley of Lifelink Georgia will be present to accept the proclamation and make any comments. Jackie, feel free to make any comments after I've finished, come on up. Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life, and whereas more than a hundred and twenty-three thousand men, women, and children await the life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplants, of which over five thousand reside in Georgia, and whereas the need for organ, eye, and tissue donation grows daily as a new patient is added to the national waiting list for an organ transplant every eleven minutes, and whereas the critical donor shortage remains a public health crisis as an average of eighteen people die daily due to the lack of available organs, and whereas organ, eye, and tissue donation can provide families the comfort of knowing the gift of donated organs and tissue endows another person with renewed hope for a healthy life, and whereas donating through an organ, eye, and tissue donation is the ultimate act of generosity and kindness that county citizens can perform, and whereas Lifelink of Georgia is the nonprofit community service organization dedicated to the recovery of high-quality organs and tissues for transplantation therapy, and whereas Harris County supports Lifelink of Georgia's life-saving mission. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Harris County, Georgia, does hereby proclaim April, two thousand and fifteen, as Donate Life Month in Harris County, to honor all those who made the decision to give the gift of life, to focus attention on the extreme need for organ, eye, and tissue donation, to encourage all residents to take action and sign up on Georgia's donor registry at www.donatelifegorgia.org, and you can call our office and we'll definitely give that to you subsequently, to discuss the miracle of transplantation as a family, and to make a family commitment to organ, eye, and tissue donation, so proclaiming the seventh day of April, two thousand and fifteen, and I make that motion. Second. Second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion taken. Jackie, would you want to make any comments?
My daughter, Jessica Hudson-Easley, she was an organ donor, she died at seventeen months of age. Life came, came to me and asked me what I'm going to donate, and I, it came in a very complimented, sure and way, I decided to donate, to save other parents from going out of the corner. It's been a very rewarding, doing this, it gave me the opportunity to use another person, and it gave me the opportunity for my daughter to legacy alive, and I want to thank you for having me here to speak today, thank you.
Jackie, we thank you, and thank you on behalf of your donation, and what you continue to do for the citizens of Harris County, and I will give you this proclamation, thank you. Thank you. Official, please. Thank you. Alright, we have to suspend the regular media at this point in time because we have a public hearing which is scheduled for 7:30. While I am reading the procedures, commissioners will please fill out their conflict of interest forms and pass them over. I would call the public hearing to order, I will read the application. Then the applicant will make a, or his or her representative will make their presentation. That will then be followed by comments of individuals in favor of the application. After those have been completed, we will then hear from the individuals in opposition to the application. And when that is complete, the applicant or his or her representative can make any summary statements from above or final comments. Then I will close the public hearing and we will take action. Let me indicate, I open the public hearing. This is a public hearing. The applicant is Janelle Dixon, 245 West Bonaker Road, Catala, Georgia. Rezone 2.47 acres of land lots 113 and 144. Land District 18, map 048A, parcel 050. From R2, which is medium-density residential to C3 neighborhood commercial. Present use is a vacant building. Opposed use is as a photography studio. The planner had recommended approval with conditions. The planning commission has also recommended approval with conditions. Those, with four conditions which they forwarded. One is that it is to be specified only as used as a photography studio. Number two, any exterior lighting is to be directed away from all adjoining residential property and public roads. Number three, only one principal freestanding sign is permitted. There is a maximum of eight feet in height and a maximum sign structure of 32 square feet. Double-faced with external illumination as a 4x8 sign. And the building sign is limited to 25% of the wall on which the sign is placed up to a maximum of 100 square feet. Ms. Janelle H. Dixon, who lives at 981 West Bonaker Road in Catala, is the owner and the applicant. And I think I have read everything else at this point in time. So Ms. Dixon, are you here?
Yes.
And I will hear your comments, please, ma'am.
This building has been...
You please state your address.
My name is Janelle Dixon and I live at 981 West Bonaker Road, Catala, Georgia. And I was there since 1963. This building was a church. And then it was my daughter and her husband bought it and remodeled it and basically for a daycare. It was a daycare for a while and then my son-in-law, paying ill, with leukemia. And they had to close the building and we closed the business. And so it was there. My daughter is unable to work. And her husband died after 17 months of leukemia. And the bank was becoming insistent that she just let them foreclose on the building because she didn't work and her husband was dying. And my husband, John Dixon, went to the bank and talked to them and to see if they could modify the loan or the payments or the interest. And they refused. My husband bought it. And we've had it since 2010. And these people, several people have called about the building, but they were not viable tenants. They didn't measure up to what we needed. And then Mrs. Fuller called me and talked to me. And it was just, just something about her that just spoke to my heart and said, "This is what God wants us to do with this building." And we have worked with them. They have worked very, very hard. They've spent a lot of money. And of course, I have spent money to get it up to code. And it's a very nice building. They've done a lot of work. It will be an asset to Harris County. There will be tax benefits. And the building will only be used probably like 85. They do a lot of contract work with the schools, going and taking pictures of... There will not be any late-night things. There won't be a lot of traffic there. It just, they work by appointment. And of course, people can come and tour the building and look at what they've got. I think that it would be an asset to Harris County. And I would like for you to approve it, if possible.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. Are there any citizens here who wish to speak in favor of this application? Any citizens wishing to speak in favor? Any citizens here that wish to speak in opposition to this application? Any wishing to speak in opposition? Alright. Ms. Dixon, there's nothing for you to rebut, but if you would like to make any other comments, you certainly have that opportunity.
Well, these owners, I mean the people that are the tenants, they are Harris County residents. They probably have, they have three children that are assets to our community. And I think that you will never, never be sorry that you approved this resoning.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions with Ms. Dixon?
I do. Dixon, you also live on the same street, is that correct?
That's correct.
How far away do you live from the building?
Approximately three, four miles, I would say. I live across the street from the entrance to Smoke Rise subdivision. And this building is about, would you say a quarter mile from 27? About that.
Get that far?
Yes. I have walked that, from my house, around that block. A million miles, I think. It's one mile from my house to Harris County to 27. So it's pretty close. It's pretty, it's pretty close.
You live on the same side of the street as the building?
Same side of the street, yes.
Commissioner, just a comment, this is in my district. I talked to Ms. Dixon several weeks ago about this. The property across the street from this is rezoned, it is rezoned commercial. And there actually are really no houses in the residential part that sit right next to this. There are none behind and the others are to the side. And it's really their backyards, more or less. That's a narrow between two streets, Winchester and West Bonaker. There are no, our planner, Ms. Hathaway, has been out there and looked at it. We had some discussion about it. I just wanted her candid opinion and... Because there is a little bit of difference here in the acreage from the acreage required. You know, a photography business is certainly a quiet business. And it fits, it would fit in very well with that neighborhood. And it's really on the edge of a commercial neighborhood.
Do you have another question?
Yeah.
If it's R2, how... Dixon mentioned a daycare where apparently it's had commercial operations on that side earlier. I was curious.
It fit, R, it fit, a daycare fits in R2. That's why. But yeah, it does have another R2, R2 right across the street, probably. On C4, actually, which is highway commercial. Couple of lots of, up the street. Any other questions, if commissioners have any? And I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Since it is my district, I will make the motion that we approve this request.
I'll second.
Any conditions? With the four conditions as stated. For four.
From the planner or from the planning?
The four from the planning commission. Which the only difference is, A, is the first one is, under the planning commission was restricted to only a photography business, whereas A, under the planner, was only several other types of businesses, but still restricted for the four.
So your motion is which?
Is for the planning commissions for four conditions.
So as a photography studio?
As photography, yes. Okay, any other discussion on this? All in favor, please, will you give up? Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
I am against spot zoning, particularly spot commercial zoning, because it always seems to end up a disaster down the road. However, I went down and looked at this place and this place is probably one of the few exceptions to that rule that I've ever seen.
Okay. It has kind of under itself. Alright, we have a motion, any, and a second. Any other discussions? All in favor, signal by raising your hand. Motion carries. Dixon, you have your rezoning. Good luck to y'all.
Thank you.
I know they have been working on it and it already looks good. Thank you very, very much. Alright.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. The next item is a request for tax refund. We have a total of requests, this is from Callaway Gardens. Request made for vehicles, for which the tags were purchased in February. But the vehicles have been sold in November. So they really shouldn't have applied for the tags anyway, but they did and they paid them. The tax assessor agrees with that. And there's a total of $218.05. Go ahead, a motion.
Make the motion that it be approved.
You have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please, signal by raising your hand. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda scheduled would be Alcohol Ordinance Amendment to Age of Serving. And let me just explain briefly. This was a request, going to be a request to allow individuals who are 18 years of age to serve alcoholic beverages for consumption on premise. So, you know, that would mostly be places where you would have it with a beer. However, Callaway Gardens, I think, was the main one pushing for this. And Mr. Callaway called earlier today and requested that this be detailed. To allow a little bit more information to be given to the public about what it actually was for. And they would let us know when they want to review it.
And also he wanted, he gave some suggestions to make it actually more restrictive. So that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be county-wide. He's got some suggestions that would narrow the focus so that there would only be one establishment exactly utilized.
Well, legally, that could be done.
I see what he's suggesting, but...
They either use the World Economic Assistance Program designation or the resort zonings of...
You're interested in that?
But it's not here. It doesn't restrict it. If you put the resort, it's restricted to the resort zoning here, would be our focus. I'll talk with the other.
Yeah, I think, I think it gives us some time to do some research on that, too. Anyway, it has been withdrawn, I guess, around the table. It would be withdrawn until they decide they want to bring it back. Alright. Next item, water rate. Homeowners Association.
I can give you the background on this.
Alright, please do.
Mr. Culpepper is here to address it as well. They're kind of a pickle. They have commercial that's clearly commercial, they have residential that's clearly residential. But homeowners associations have meters for common areas and things like that, which... Are they residential or probably commercial? He felt that they should probably be commercial and initiated that change. Had some issues with some folks being unhappy with that. And I said that we would bring it forth commission, to let the commission, that's a policy that the commission should make. So I bring it to you to allow you to make the policy, whether that should be treated as a residential use or commercial use. Difference is residential bill is 16...
Residential's 1360, yeah. And the commercial's 13232, so... Interesting.
I'll just follow up. I kind of got the story, you know, within yourself. I was contacted by one of my constituents who's here and they want to speak with me later on. And he was concerned about the change to commercial rate. And after discussing with him, continued emails, I concur. I think that my argument is that the policy of the commission should be to encourage the homeowners associations rather than discourage homeowners associations. My homeowners associations are active and do a good job. It certainly makes the community that they live in a lot better. And to me, when you're dealing with water rates for homeowners association, clearly in my mind, it's more residential as opposed to commercial. I don't know of any homeowners association that makes money. I guess they may have some kind of income if they have dues. But it's my opinion that homeowners associations should be afforded residential rates as opposed to commercial rates. And I would encourage my fellow commissioners to move on if that's possible.
Mr. Culpepper, when we talk homeowners association, I guess typically think of a subdivision, closely knit subdivision. My thinking is they made water plants and entrances or whatnot, or swimming pools. Are there other things that are included in that, to your knowledge?
That's pretty much what's included. And the way this came about, Mr. Chairman, it was discovered in my office that we had some that were commercial and some residential. And it's never been defined as far as residential is, in my definition, a home where people live. Homeowner association that waters flowers and grass. Typically, they use more water. It's a collection of people. And we just, we don't have, we don't have a clear definition of either residential or commercial. So to put them all on the same page, that's where we go.
How could we justify a homeowners residential association as being commercial?
My question, does any of it use things such as golf courses or events that would bring other people in that are...
We have residential, commercial, and then of course industrial, but ultimately, I agree.
But I mean, any of the homeowners associations in practice you're talking about, do they have golf courses that would...
They got the Happy Road over there now. I know they water some out of the lake and also how much is water. But I'm sure that, you know, they supplement with our water.
And that's open to the public to view, go in and play a game of golf?
Yes, ma'am.
The problem of why they're...
That's commercial, it's challenging.
That's, that's my fault.
The default on the commercial category. The default in the commercial category, for your watering grass or entrance.
In the subject.
That subdivision, I think that it falls with residential.
We don't have anything divided in any ordinances about that. Policy, I guess, to kind of give just something to go by. Mr. Theus, sign up to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ted Theus, I reside at 292 Rocky Shoals Drive. I have with me Dr. Billy Cunningham, who also resides in the neighborhood and he developed the subdivision just a few years ago. Not too long ago. But anyway, we do just use our water for watering the entranceway, the grass and the flower plantings. Our dues and our expenses run neck and neck. We're certainly not engaged in any kind of for-profit activities. We've been, we feel like grandfathered in under the residential rate now for many, many years. And frankly, back when we, you know, looked at the numbers, it was do we drill a well or do we go with the residential rate that we were provided by the county and it was real close. So that if we have to be reclassified as commercial, which is going to more than double our rate, you know, we're going to have to drill a well, because that would be the cheaper route for us to go. But I don't want to belate the point, but I don't know if Billy wants to add anything, but we certainly are not engaged in any kind of activity that we feel like is in any way commercial and no for-profit activities and it's simply a collection of homeowners that want to enhance the entranceway to our subdivision, that we hope increase our property values, which helps the county and.
Thank you.
I would just, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a caveat. It sounds like we're going to go the route of residential, which I don't have a problem with at all. But there's always the situation that if we get into a forced water conservation situation, then we may have to revisit the situation rather than using potable water for irrigation purposes. But that circumstance, hopefully, we don't have to address in the future, but just want the commission to be aware that if that situation does arise, we may have to look to go that direction. I'm saying we're going to have to, but you need to have that information available just when you make your decision.
Woodland Hills, do they, I mean, you say you don't really know how much they use from the lake and how much they pay for, but they do have.
Majority of their water comes out of the lake for irrigation. Now, I'm not sure about the entranceway. I know they have a meter for water.
I think Joey makes a good point. Do they have a commercial operation?
That's commercial.
Like, like Dan, I've heard other suggestions. Yeah.
And I don't know what a good, good cutoff point is, because I haven't studied the data. But if, say, they use less than 10,000 gallons per month, then they would be classified residential. If they go higher than that, then they're using it for, I don't know. Then that may not be the right number, because we haven't looked at it, but I don't know how you feel about that.
Yeah, and that would depend maybe on the size of the subdivision too. How many entrances there are.
My problem I get into is, you know, is when you get up to a certain level, you are passing a residential use and you're also using potable water for irrigation. You know, at some point in time, it's better to use well water, or encourage use of well water rather than using treated water that we have a limited quantity of, you know, per E P D in our tub. So that's something that, you know, needs to be considered and I don't, and we haven't studied it at some point to see if anybody out there is, you know, using 50,000 gallons a month or something like that. That'd be a little bit out there, but that is, that would be something we think needs to be looked at, because we can't. We need to encourage conservation where it's appropriate.
I agree. If they're nonprofit and that's where we want to draw the line, I just want to know, I need to know so I can treat everybody the same. And two, we need to figure out, we've had some commercial, if we change them, if y'all decide we change them all residential, do we owe anybody any money from the past? Or is it affecting the black? I just need to know that.
I don't, we certainly don't owe anybody any way from the past.
Did we change the policy, this would be our perspective from this point forward.
You know, I, I, I think we maybe do need to study this a little bit more, but I think we can do something just kind of on an interim basis right away, and maybe it is the nonprofit. If it's a nonprofit, and which homeowners' associations are nonprofit.
Ted, do you know which one?
I don't know that we're officially a five O N C. I mean, we don't, we don't pay taxes, we want to get a profit, but I don't know that many homeowners are going to be officially nonprofit organizations.
John, we have some thoughts on that. If it has any commercial use.
I think that Callaway, does Callaway do all of their own water? You don't apply any county water to it. There's really only one then that I'm aware of in the county, and that's Woodland Hills, that we're, that has a golf course.
But if you're a problem for Woodland Hills or say any other subdivision, that they are using some for golf course, that those would be separate meter?
And I'm not positive that they use our water for irrigation, but, you know, I think that they do have a connection, but we can go to them and ask them and they may say, you know, clearly no. And they may be, they may not be utilizing the entranceway meter now, they may be watering their flowers if they're watering from their irrigation from the lake. And that'd be very simple for them to, you know, find out.
Did we cable this?
Probably table this, you guys may have a bill.
Can leave it where it was.
How many months' bill do you send out with the new?
I think it was February, February, March that it was affected. But we sent out notices, you know, give a couple of months' notice there.
How many accounts are affected yet?
I don't know, I don't know the number, no more than, no more than probably fifteen of the entranceways. Now, we had a few others.
Put my table this, freeze the current rates.
Oh, four, he went up this town. So he's already made the change.
Freeze the current, the previous.
The previous rate.
Grandfather.
Does that help you at all, Jim?
I think I'm more confused now. But we'll keep it where it was on the residential until we come back.
Rocky Shoals should still be on residential way until you can define the constitution of what the policy.
So those that are currently, that are currently on residential way would stay?
Would stay residential.
Probably designation would be the resort zone, right? But let's, yeah. And people, I don't know if people are using it anyway, they do their own. Okay, well, let's, we got a motion then, to leave, leave it the way it was for the time being. And then we probably get a parade, we'll just take a look at it so we make sure we do it in our proper place, right? We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Alright, next is another proclamation. Everybody seems to wake up in the spring, it's time to, time to do these things.
Mr. Carroll, since he's a Toastmaster, shouldn't we read the proclamation yet?
Well, I tell you, we could do that, test his Toastmaster skills.
You might if you don't.
All of you have read this, though, let's do it this way, all of you have read this, it's in your package. So do I have a motion, or I make the motion that we approve this proclamation? In a second. We got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say if I raise your hand. Alright, and. We have a gentleman from Toastmasters International here. You would please first step forward?
My district governor also.
District governor?
District governor for district fourteen, Charlie McFarrell.
Alright, Charlie. Alright. How are y'all doing? I'm going to give you this, we have put this sign down. Congratulate y'all, I'm a former Toastmaster and it's an excellent organization. So you would please step there and read it and commissioners are, the commissioners have been. We have read it, so I'll let you face the audience next guest and read it.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Proclamation, Toastmasters Month in Harris County. Whereas in today's competitive job market, companies and organizations are seeking employees who possess leadership, communication, and social skills. The ability to impart ideas effectively is essential to advancement in any occupation. And whereas for more than seventy years, Georgia Toastmasters volunteers have mentored their club members, helping them develop contemporary, from its speaking and leadership skills. Toastmasters training is available throughout district fourteen, from Athens to Bagdad, from Columbus to the Atlantic Ocean, with more than 2,342 members and over 125 clubs. And whereas three generations of Georgia citizens, who may have previously lacked confidence and ability, have now become competent and effective leaders in our community, schools, businesses, places of worship, and government. Many of these new leaders use their newfound voices in numerous Georgia charitable endeavors to advocate for those who have no voice. And whereas Toastmasters Month is an effort to inform the public of the importance of public speaking and the benefits of improving leadership, communication, and social skills. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Harris County, Georgia, does hereby proclaim April 2015 as Toastmasters Month in Harris County, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens. So proclaim this seventh day of April, 2015. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And just to let you know, we are having our spring conference at Callaway Gardens, April 24th and 25th.
Good for you.
Yes, we brought it home. I'm a Harris County, I live in Chalo. And I really promote it and we just opened a club in La Grange and in Thomasville, we have about ten clubs in Columbus. So we're trying to spread it out, spread the news up toward Harris County so we can get more people involved, so that we can have more people that are able to speak in public. And we're really focusing on leadership skills.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to add to that also. Toastmasters has truly changed my life. I joined Toastmasters at Aflac and I, we're so appreciative of Joey Lauternow, who's serving so honorably in Aflac for so many years. And Aflac has been a huge sponsor of Toastmasters in district fourteen here in Georgia. And we are so grateful to Aflac and to all the other businesses around here. Toastmasters and Total Systems and others that have been so gracious in sponsoring us. So we really appreciate each and every one. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Alright, I would be remiss, I know it has already appeared in our local paper, but I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to just point out how fortunate we are to have such a wonderful EMS group in Harris County. This group, they have annual awards banquet and our county manager, Greg Wood, attended the most recent one. We were, I think we had folks going in all directions that evening. But we were very fortunate in that Jimmy Carver, the, our EMS director, was named Director of the Year for our district. District Awards. And Bucky Cersey was honored for.
A Sayew.
A Sayew award, saving the life of someone, with any other, it's Greg.
That was it?
Shane.
Shane, what did he want?
Shane Owens, it was a hard, it was a struggle.
And Shane Owens also received an award. So those, those guys are, you know, doing a great job for us and it's being recognized by people and they're bringing honor to Harris County. So just wanted to mention that to everyone. Alright, now we move into county manager's portion and the first item is the fire services study. Greg?
We discussed this something at our retreat in February. The face of fire services is changing in Harris County. It's ever, it's more difficult for them to provide services all the time with them trying to get volunteers and the state adding training requirements. Stop me if I'm saying something wrong, guys, but we're at a point where we need to examine where, how we can better support our fire services. If any changes need to be made in the structure, especially with something like the Grove coming down the line, how is that going to affect our fire services? This proposal that you have before you examines the various needs as far as service demands, delivery strategies, analysis, and one of the important things is that it will look at system financing. This has gone before the chiefs group. They asked for some emphasis on volunteer services, which was added to this. What we are requesting is permission to go out, send an R P out for firms to conduct this study and bring the results back to the commission with suggestions on anything they can do to help the services, any changes they suggest as financing methods. That's it, kind of nutshell. We've got all the chiefs here, pretty much. I don't know if they wanted to have any input on it. Certainly always welcome their thought, but I would like to have, as part of the understanding, that we would have at least representative, maybe two from the chiefs group to help review the R Ps when they're sent in for the qualifications or just that the commission go ahead and establish a committee of that made up of county staff, emergency service personnel as far as probably our nine oh one director, our EMS director. How many people do you think would be appropriate from the chiefs association?
Three.
More, three.
Three or fourteen? And I don't know if you'd like the commissioner to sit in on that as well.
Do we have any analysis costs?
It will cost anywhere between twenty and seventy thousand dollars.
Pretty big range.
Yes, it is. And there's companies that are, come in and they're going to offer you Cadillac, we don't need Cadillac. We need a decent Ford that's got a lot of torque. You can pull some stumps out of there. There are some folks that have experience that are not going to charge us an arm or a leg, that have been recommended by a C C G, that have been told that we'll do the study between seventeen and twenty thousand dollars and we'll do a good job, provided they respond. And then there's other companies out there that, you know, this is how, you know, they make their, their living and they're going to come in and they're going to do a dog and pony show and charge you, you know, ten dollars a word. So we will get a broad spectrum, I'm sure, but hopefully this is written in such a fashion that we will get what we need for what we can afford.
I think that we want to ensure that they have a background in looking at body of fire services.
Is that what that is?
Right here.
So we need your direction.
I think it makes sense to go ahead and establish committee with, be the review panel on this. I think it makes sense to, to go ahead and establish committee with, be the review panel on this. I guess from what I've heard, uh, let's say we have two chiefs. We have EMS, 911.
Myself.
Greg.
And we may want to have Nancy, and Nancy wants to play too, she's waving. And depending how it goes, we may want to bring Paul in as far as the financial side.
And that can be adjunct to that. Becky, you, you go to the fire chiefs meetings. Would you like to be on that committee to review that? I'm asking.
Sure.
Okay. Alright, so that's two, three, four, five, six, seven.
That's a good number. I, I think you get too much bigger than that.
Yeah, probably. Okay. Alright, um... Two chiefs, EMS, 911, those are two separate ones. Greg, Nancy, and Becky. And then Paul, if we need to look at financial aspects.
We are financially advised.
But I don't think Paul. I forget who.
So this would be to review the request or proposals and make a recommendation.
Review the RFPs to come back to a recommendation to the board of commissioners. And that way the fire chiefs have input into that too, make sure that that's okay. Alright, um, well, then I will make the motion that we, uh, go ahead and go out with the RFPs and we have the committee, as we just discussed, uh, to, to be the reviewers of those RFPs. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, simply by raising your hand.
Greg, did you have something?
No, ma'am.
Alright, thank you. It'd be good to take a look at that. It's been a while, so, um, we've got the new circumstances, I guess, begin to dictate some of the things, so. Good. Alright, next is, uh, airport water line extension. Greg?
Uh, as you know, we've done a good bit of work out there for, um, a commercial hangar. One of the things we need to make that a reality is water. Champion Wells, who owns the water system now, um, has given us a proposal to, um, extend that line at five dollars per foot plus the cost of county buying the materials, um, which the cost of materials is, uh, twelve thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. The cost of the, uh, work at five dollars per foot is approximately seventy-five hundred dollars. I've had Mr. Culpepper review it. He felt that the, uh, pipe charges were appropriate and that the, uh, labor charges were appropriate as well. They are slammed with trying to get their own projects and, and since this is already the Champion System, um, felt it was appropriate to, uh, bring this before you to, for approval to go ahead. Um, we can fund it, I believe, if the attorney doesn't have an issue with it with the, uh, the water splosh funds. Um, so it will come out of general fund.
Alright, do you have your motion?
Thanks for the motion.
Second.
The motion in a second.
Ma'am.
Any discussion? All in favor, simply by raising your hand. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Champion. Thank you, sir. Just, just, uh, to bring some of y'all up to date, the, um, we have pretty much cleared the land that is, was given to us by, additional land given to us by Calloway. Uh, and we've got, uh, most of the, at least the roadbed for temporary road cleared to get down to, uh...
I need to correct, we have not done clearing in there. That was the cutting done by the, um, force company, the temporary company. We are only clearing it up to make the access road. We, we're not gonna, we'll eventually have to get a undisturbed permit, but we're staying within those parameters right now. We don't have to do that.
So, we, this allows to get construction equipment back to that site and we can then move forward with the construction of the, uh, corporate hangar. Alright, uh, anything else, Greg?
I just saw on E P D watching the video.
Alright, we'll make sure we obey that. Anything else, Greg?
Not this evening.
Okay, uh, next is county attorney, Mr. Taylor. First item, an intergovernmental agreement with Shallow for vehicle maintenance.
Uh, yes, sir. Agreement before you is a, a rather, rather simple agreement. Uh, it's an intergovernmental agreement between two, uh, two governmental entities, which, which is permitted by Georgia law. The Harris, uh, Shallow operates and owns four motor vehicles, uh, that they deliver, deliver services to its, uh, its citizens and, and of course, uh, they don't have any, any means to service those vehicles or repair those vehicles. We have a repair shop here that operates and, and performs the services on our vehicles. And because of the small nature and the, the restraints on the, uh, budget to the Shallow, uh, they have approached the county to ask the county to provide vehicle maintenance and repair services for the Shallow vehicles, which would include, uh, oil changes, tire changes, rotations, vehicle, uh, you know, mechanical maintenance and repairs. Uh, however, the, uh, necessary emergency repairs to county vehicles will take, uh, groundwork with the city vehicles and what to do is the city has agreed to compensate the county for parts and labor that are caused, uh, for performing the, uh, the maintenance and whatnot on the, on these vehicles that are built monthly. Uh, and the, the agreement is for a period of one year. And I drew it so that, uh, that they, the, uh, any party may terminate the, the contract, uh, with, upon ninety days notice. So if you get into it, it doesn't work for us, it doesn't work for them, we can terminate it. Uh, and, but we also, I also put a clause, uh, sent it in here that would be reviewed annually. And the idea was that, uh, within sixty days prior to the termination of the agreement, that both parties would get together and review the terms of the, of the agreement as it, as it, uh, as they exist, review the cost for providing the maintenance and repair services. And then if there's any reason to change the, uh, the terms of the agreement, uh, then we can, we can do that at that point in time. One party wants to back out, sir, then we can, you can terminate at that point in time. The, uh, agreement will be effective upon your approval. Uh, I understand that in fact the agreement is, that you have before you, the city of Shallow is already approved and is drafted and, uh, and I recommend it to you for your approval.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. I have a second. A second. Same discussion. Uh, yeah, there's a typo on, on the fourth line in the first paragraph. It's not material.
Luke, correct.
Yeah. I'm concerned for this, leads us with some of the other cities. How will Shallow differ from the others? Can we accommodate other cities with their requests?
I don't know. I don't know. Beyond, beyond me, I don't know how many vehicles anybody else has got, but, uh...
I'll, I'll take it on. Um, I think Pine Mountain is fairly subsufficient and has, has pretty well taken care of up there. Hamilton, I don't know how you're doing Ricky, but, uh, they say they keep their stuff running pretty well as well. Um, Shallow is kinda isolated off there. It doesn't have the resources. Waverly Hall has some pretty good repair shops there as well. Um, I think the, the main genesis of this was that, um, Shallow just doesn't have the repair facilities. Uh, that would said, um, I'm not looking at our vehicle maintenance as an enterprise fund, um, but we do have a new director who is, is going in a new direction. He's looking to save money for, not only for his own department, but for other county departments. There's a whole change of mindset there. And it may actually get to the point where, um, we may have some room to take on some of those assignments and, um, subsidize some of our revenue there. Uh, so I think this is actually probably a good test case. And if we find that it overtaxes us, then, you know, we'd, we'd have to stop there. But, um, Shallow's pretty unique mainly because they don't have the resources that most of the other cities as far as repair shops. I know Waverly Hall has two good repair shops at least. Um, Pine Mountain does. Um, Hamilton seems to be in pretty good shape as well. They're kinda out there without the resources to support. Does that make sense?
It does. It just... You say that, uh, a new person has different ideas, but are we there to the point of having enough extra time to take on these other vehicles?
I, I imagine we could trust each one in the business.
I don't have any problem taking on Shallow and I, and I'm not quite sure exactly how the whole genesis of this is gonna take place. Because not only are we, um, we're gonna do a better job with what we already do. We'll try to build a team where, um, the folks have, uh, are much more familiar in, with the new technology that as far as the diagnostics and being able to do things, um, with the new, that we didn't have to ship up out because we did not have the diagnostic capability. As of now, we've got the new director and already had BJ on board that knew how to do the diagnostics. Both individuals that we interviewed for, um, Benny's job are very up to speed and knowledgeable on those new techniques. So what we're doing is building a team that's going to be, um, able to take on the new challenges that we have as far as, there's so much stuff. I think I apologize for the fire. There's so much stuff that's computerized now on vehicles, um, that you have to be half IT special and half mechanic. And, and then taking a new generation of, of folks to, to take on those problems. And I think that's gonna help us with some of our outside repairs too. I think Andy and, and Ricky should probably speak to some of those issues as well. Their experience.
I haven't had a good job. Maybe a lot of hope when they do, you know, they're on the floor.
But I, I understand your concern, um, but I just don't see the other cities necessarily being in that situation because they have much more resources available.
So it doesn't give Shallow an unfair advantage over the others?
No.
Cost wise or anything?
No.
Alright. Do you have a motion? Oh, we already got a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, please simply by raising your hand. The next item is the agreement with the Lautermit Family Christian Foundation. John?
Yes, sir. Before you is a, uh, an agreement between the county and the, uh, Lautermit Family Christian Foundation Incorporated through the very, uh, the good graces and graciousness of George Lautermit. The, uh, funds were provided to, uh, to purchase the, the property, the Willis property over Ellisland. You renamed it Ellison Park and you have, are working on developing that park. Uh, part of the, uh, as, as part of that development, there is the, the house that, uh, the Willis has lived in and, uh, you plan to use that as, as a kind of a community center, uh, for family reunions, meetings, community meetings and that type of thing. The house needs some work done on it. And that's what this agreement will, uh, will do. And what it has, uh, the, the way it's set up is that the foundation, Lautermit Foundation agrees to donate and provide all the necessary funds to make the improvements to, uh, in the, uh, in the Willis house. Now, the Willis house is shown on a plaque, of course, that you, and you are most, have seen, been out there and seen it. But the county agrees to use that, uh, those improvements that are made as a part of its recreation facilities and, so, you know, subject to whatever conditions imposed, uh, you, you impose on them. Uh, but, uh, I have three of this agreement before you. It says that, uh, the, the parties shall mutually develop plans and specification for the improvements of the house. So, along with an estimate of cost. So what, uh, I think the, the idea was that, uh, the, uh, foundation would, uh, would get with the county, uh, and to come up with an idea of, you know, what you wanted to do. And that would, of course, would have to meet with your approval, uh, as well as the, the foundation. And then the, the cost estimates. And then you will authorize the, uh, by resolution, uh, approve the, uh, the improvements to be made and then authorize the foundation to solicit bids uh, in a, uh, into a, uh, contract in the name of the foundation. Uh, I think that the idea was that the foundation wants to, wants to have a particular builder that it wants to use, that will do the type of job that is, is being contemplated. And, uh, so as a result, uh, the foundation will pay, uh, pay the cost of that once you, the, the plans are approved. And then, uh, in item four, I would bring to your attention, there is a, uh, some protection that, uh, written in there is that the foundation will, will furnish appropriate payment and performance bonds uh, to cover the entire cost. If you did this yourself and the project runs over a hundred thousand dollars, then you're gonna have to require a payment and performance bond. But this will be ultimately, uh, for your protection as well as the foundation. So if, if the contractor has some, some difficulties there, the payment bond will, will pay for any of the, uh, equipment or material, uh, performance bond that will require and ensure that the, that the, uh, project be completed according to the plans and specification. Uh, but, uh, that once the, and then once the improvements are completed, then, uh, according to the plans, then the property is of course owned by the county. Uh, the improvements are owned by the county is, uh, and it becomes a, a part of your, uh, recreation facilities that are, you know, being developed as in Ellison Park. Uh, we put a time limit that we try to go on and conclude this within a calendar year, hopefully before that. But, uh, they had listed, uh, the design bidding and construction will be completed within one calendar year of the time you, you, uh, approve the agreement. And, uh, while, upon approval of the agreement, then the foundation will, will approve it and be able to move, uh, toward complete, uh, having the, uh, the, the, the plan designed for you to review for the improvements. I recommend it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do you have a motion? You have a motion. We have a second discussion. You got the, uh, you have a couple little times.
Yes, I've, I've made those changes.
Alright. You got, you have a question?
Those, those changes were, you know, in item, in item three, the third word said the party's "and", you know, I took out the word "and" and eagle, you know, eagle, eagle eye Lang always picks those things up and there's another one there somewhere that's kinda as innocuous as that one was.
Yep. Five, the second line.
Yes. Shall become the property of and be owned by. Now, I had a little bit ahead, I put the word "be" in it, so. It is now correct.
Alright. Any other discussion? All in favor, simply by raising your hand. Your motion carries. Same, I figured. And we thank you, Mr. Lautermit. Very, very much. Just continue to bless us.
You just need to get it done and it's all open. Citizens can enjoy it.
Absolutely. And then we have, uh, one more item that I'm aware of from Mr. Taylor, and that is the GDOT, revision and resolution regarding Georgia Highway 354.
Yes, sir. Before you is a, uh, letter that has come from the, uh, Georgia Department of Transportation regarding your request to, uh, have a portion of, uh, State Route 354 removed from the state highway system. Uh, and this was prompted by cause of some concerns and, uh, factors coming out of, uh, the cooked foods and the, the trucks that were coming up and down that, that, that highway. Right now it is part of the highway system of, of Georgia. Uh, that portion of it, and if you'll, uh, look on, uh, the material that you've been furnished, uh, the, uh, you'll see the, the, uh, the route. Uh, and it, uh, was, uh, runs from down through Pine Mountain Valley, uh, pretty straight. And then down, uh, down near, there's an inset that shows that, uh, down near 190, there is a, a pretty, uh, uh, sharp turn in, which I think you had some concerns about whilst making that, that turn. there is a, a pretty sharp turn in there, which I think you have some concerns about, plus making that, that turn. But there is, you notice the Department of Transportation has defined the abandonment of the route, and it will be removed from the state, from its junction with SR one, State Route one sixteen to East Street, and runs three point one nine miles. And the, once it's removed from it, then of course, the state has no further obligation to maintain that road. It becomes your, your county, becomes a county road, subject to your maintenance of the road and as well as subject to your, your enforcement of traffic regulations or whatnot on the road. There is a resolution that's attached to these, these documents that you need to approve tonight. And once you do that, then that will, if it's returned out to the state, then that will remove from the, this portion of it from the road list. I recommend that to you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
This is in District one, and I do so move that we accept.
It's kind of unusual. Usually the other way around, we're trying to get them to take roads, and they won't do it.
Well, maybe they'll think about that when we ask them to take one.
Right. Swap.
Yes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I think we do.
You have a second? And as you will know from the insert, three fifty-four will stop at the, before, if you're heading east, it will stop at the ramp leading up to one ninety. Three fifty-four will then be maintained as State Main, Public Road oh 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 two, which it is now, and will become State Road three fifty-four. So that takes them up to one ninety. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise a hand. Motion carries. Anything else, John?
No, sir.
All right, that concludes the agenda. Do we have a?
We have to adjourn.
I, I have two things. I have a question, and I have to update. I talked with the recycling company today about our pay park recycle for the last month, our project over there. Recycling has been picked up four times in the last month. The bin has been filled every time, and there has been no contamination of the recycle.
How often do they pick up?
Once a week. It's usually on Tuesdays. But we have people who are driving from your side of the county and have let them know.
That's probably one on my side.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so it, it's going well so far in the first.
And then the other thing we have to look at would be the tonnage to see how that looks. But that's, that's good. I've been by, I'm pretty sure.